Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's 5:30. And we'll call this special session by order at this time. Conduct and accept canvas of votes for the City of Landpasses and City of Council, general election held on May 3rd, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At this time, we are going to accept the canvas and votes and verify that it matches the summary of returns. So on page six, for the mayor, we have her peers for 333 votes. Councilmember Place 1, Danielle Tucker Shepherd, at 192. Councilmember Place 1, Dorothy Person, 197. Councilmember Place 2, Barry Hernandez, 325. Councilmember Place 3, Edward Gold, 248. Councilmember Place 3, Miles Hyder, 128. Councilmember Place 6, Charlie Cradis, 231. And then Councilmember Place 6, Alexis Consonant, at 140. So at this time, we'll just accept the canvas of votes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I administer oath of office to newly elected and re-elected councilmembers.
Okay. Could I have the newly elected and re-elected councilmembers down here, please? Great. All right. Let's do the councilmembers first. And we need to pose this, right? So, uh, 41 up there. And I'll kind of be off to the side here. And raise your hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carol Rivers.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Under the oath, under the office of Landpasses City Council Member.
Under the office of Landpasses City Council Member.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Condolent. Mayor? Raise your right hand, please. I, Herb Pierce.
I, Herb Pierce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the mayor of the City of Landpasses, Texas.
Of the mayor of the City of Landpasses, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mayor and Council, at this time, we wanted to change votes. There were no longer going to be House of Diocese with us. For the first one will be the Councilman Hyder. We have a token of appreciation for his work with our best and great efforts for the community. Mayor Prokton Morris cannot be here with us this evening, but we will get this given as well. We're very thankful for his support for the community as well.
And at this time, I want to administer the oath of office of Municipal County Court Judge, Robert Riddell.
Yeah, I think I have a suggestion. If you appoint me first.
Yes. That the City of Landpasses appoints Judge Robert Riddell.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you. That was a first for me.
Hang on to your side if you like.
I.
I, Robert Riddell.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Municipal Court Judge.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Municipal Judge of the City of Landpasses, Texas.
And to do my best.
And will to the best of my ability.
To preserve.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
So help me God.
And of this state. So help me God.
It's a little bit hungry when you have to swear the judgment. You don't know what you're doing.
You're never getting there.
Next item up on the discussion is hostile action concerning the appointment of Mayor Prokton for the 2025-26 term. And at this time, I'd like to get some nominees.
Mayor of the Burdenland, nominee Kathy, at this time, for Mayor of Prokton.
I'll say it now. Anyone else? All in favor for Ms. Kathy Kenny?
Aye.
Congratulations. And at this time, I'll adjourn our special workshop or special session here. And we will call to order our workshop session, discussion regarding chamber of commerce or by annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ms. Unger will be presenting her chamber report to you. I have reviewed and approved the reimbursement request on there. I did note that there were 26 new members as well as 45 that dropped. However, there was nine businesses that closed. So it basically broke even with the number of new members for this first and second quarter. If you have any specific questions about her report, she is here to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the appointees. Look forward to working with you guys. As Becky mentioned, it's pretty much standard for those of you who are new to the council. This is how I submit my report every six months. So Q1, Q2, Q3, and Q4. And what I do do is I put together a budget in regards to the operational expenses that the city covers at 40% for the, for operation of the visitor center, along with the reimbursement spreadsheet as to all those expenses, dates, times, I'm sorry, dates, amounts, and so forth. And then what else you'll see in your packet is a web statistics report for our visitor center website. And it also covers all the different hits and analytics for events and information requests that we mail out, information for that. And then also, in this packet, you will see the, as Becky alluded to, our growth and decline rate report. And it always looks a little interesting around this time of year because for this report, Q1, Q2 is also the timeframe when we actually do do renewal. So you will see a huge drop. But as Becky mentioned, we have a lot of new members in place of those. So everyone has a different story. And I'd be happy to speak a little bit more to that should it be needed. I have made some notes on the actual document for you to see the businesses that have closed, moved, or what have you. And then following the rest of the report is our calendar of events. In the calendar of events, we have actually have had, have had a huge uptick in the amount of events that we support. These are community events, these are nonprofit events, these are chamber hosted events, and so on and so forth. And then the final document is our overall travel information center visitation totals. And again, those numbers are a little misleading as well, just because we just recently in April began being open on the weekends. So we are now open from 10 to 4 every Saturday, and we will be open from April through September. And so obviously, you'll see those numbers grow as well. So are there any questions to my report? Okay, thank you.
Item number three, discussion regarding Hostess House structural report provided by L O C and Ortiz.
Mayor and Council, several months ago, this council issued a stop reporter on the Hostess House until a structural evaluation was done on the existing portion of the building. But it has been completed by L O C and Ms. Ortiz with L O C is here this evening to answer any questions that you might have. The report did indicate essentially that there are three options pertaining with the building. One of them kind of shores up some issues that are being seen in the walls that experienced some movement in the past due to how the original structure was constructed. Option two is a full overhaul of the facility, which is really not financially feasible for the City of Landpasses. And option three is demolition of the facility, which also is not ideal given the amount of money that's been spent on this facility so far. So Kimberly and Alex with Reliance Architecture are here, and Mr. Ortiz with L O C is here to talk about the report. If you guys have any questions for them, they can work with him.
Come forth.
Good evening, Mayor Pierce and Councilmembers. Ms. Ortiz of L O C, short form of years. Here again to discuss, of course, the original Hostess House building. The main area of contention or issue that we're here to discuss, of course, is the exterior walls system. That, I think I was requested that we evaluate that just to see what the condition was, see if there are any unsafe conditions. So I take it that everybody has a copy of the report? Have we did? And so if you have questions in that regard, I'm going to go ahead and briefly go through it. And I'm going to also assume that everybody here is familiar with the building in general, speaking, attending events there and such. So now, I'm very intimate with the building now. So originally, we were brought into this project to assess it, generally speaking, to see big good support, public assembly levels, which was also in conjunction with potential conditions in the building, which we did provide engineering services for. That component of it. At that point in time, we did some initial walkthroughs. And so at that time, we generally did not see anything in the building itself that raised a concern with us. In conjunction with that, when we started the analysis of the addition, we had the original construction documents from the last major renovation, structural engineering documents, and architectural documents, which those documents are referenced in my report. So I'll go over that as well. So anyway, basically, for this exercise, we focused on the lateral systems, which primarily consist of the exterior walls. They provide bracing for the building in general. And that construction was done over a series of renovations in addition to the building. So I'm just going to start with what I found as far as our report is concerned. In addition, by the way, in addition to the drawings that we evaluated, we also did do, we did inspections and also follow-up inspections. And in conjunction with that, we had a review of the building, so the foundation system and the second level system for the original stone, just to make sure that it supported public assembly abilities. Anyway, so let me begin here. So the original construction was basically an open-air platform. And at that time, it did not have any exterior walls on the second level. That was a dense platform. We found that out, of course, by doing some research, including that historical marker that's on the side. Later on, of course, in the City of Landpasses required, opened in 1936. The limestone veneer was added in basically 1947, 1948. And as far as that limestone veneer is concerned, that, our evaluation, that that's a very, very robust six-inch stone limestone veneer with very, very strong mortar. Typically, the mortar in stone veneers or stone masonry construction consists either of lime mortar or cement mortar. This one has actually a cement mortar. It's more like concrete, so very robust to that sort of. And we found it to basically be generally intact with, we did notice one minor defect, one of our bills. Generally speaking, that veneer, which of course surrounded all four sides of the building, we did not see anything there that caused us, caused us concern as far as the structure, structural integrity. So with that said, that build, that stone veneer does add a lot of stiffness to the system in general, integrated into the exterior walls. So, and of course, it was removed, when we did the addition, recent addition, it was removed on one hand, but that was all new construction there, reinforced that end wall. So there, we don't, it didn't contribute, we don't, we don't need it since we designed that end wall for the new addition. So we're good in that respect. So basically, the general conclusion as far as the stone veneer system and what it contributes to the lateral stability of the building, that we think that it's very intact, it's basically very stable, we didn't see the issues. Now, in conjunction with that, we did look at also framing that's integrated into the stone veneer. And on the first level, we have total stud wall system there. And that's a system that also contributed to the lateral stability of the building, almost basically sheer wall framing. That has, the original drawings indicated that it had sheathing, the way of board sheathing on the exterior, two-by-four stud wall system. And then also, there's on the inside, all those contribute to the lateral stability and stiffness of the exterior wall system. However, we did, we were able to see certain areas of the wall that were exposed. And there we noticed that board sheathing on the exterior wasn't comprehensively solved, missing gaps in it, which is not ideal, but that just, we don't know what the extent of that is because that whole area of stud wall framing is not exposed. We mainly observed that on end wall condition where it changes. And that was the way, it did have some exposed framing, you can see that. There's only partial sheathing on the exterior, which is not ideal as far as lateral stability. So the remedy for that, that's included in my report, is to add plywood, plywood on the inside, basically to take up from the lack of sheathing on the exterior. That's going to help basically add some additional lateral strength to the system on the left end. So the other thing, as far as the exterior wall system, is that on the perimeter of the second level, we have a series of beams and columns, which are part of the original construction. They support the roof structure, those called suzutro. It's a suzutro system which basically involves the framing system. And we observed also that that beam and column system distanced outward a little bit. The cause of that is due to the rust of the suzutro system on the perimeter at the ease. And so the fact that they are trusses did basically, once you load that up with the dead loads of the roof, they're basically going to stabilize if you have two trusses actually, which you do. But there is a slight outward lift of the exterior wall of the column and beam system. So with that said, that's another thing. We didn't see that it was actually failing, great like that. We see that it's basically in a state of equilibrium. However, that's never ideal because you want your walls to be plucked as far as that is concerned. So with that said, at this point in time, one of the remedies for that is simply stabilize it and get it worse. So one of the, one of the remediation issues that were recommended is to create a tie rod system at those areas to make sure that they stay intact as is and prevent them in the future ever spreading worse, eventually that's a part of the issue. So we'll do the three things that we made as far as our assessment concern. Right now, we did not see anything that would constitute a failure or an issue that's going to create a public safety or competition. However, we do think that just to prevent it with good measures of issue, we're heading to the fad. Plywood, addition of the plywood, the, the appearance of the basement wall, we see the defect, that definitely, biggest item is going to be the addition of the tie rods system of the suzutro, is what we're saying, slight outward listing of the properties at the ease. It's basically what some of our, so more than questions in that regard.
So would you use cables and tying the two walls together? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Cable would actually be probably more of a tie rod system. You could consider cable, tie rod with turnbuckles and pleases would have more flexibility to, at each location, have adjustability there. Definitely, that would be the perfect, that would be, that's the optimal solution.
Kind of what I've read in these reports here is, I mean, there's been movement in that building in the last six years.
That building has been used for a long time. And, you know, the major thing that when the, when the previous engineer at Architecture Firm did the assessment for the main renovation of the main building, at that time, the engineer should have done pretty much a lateral analysis in conjunction with the public upgrade of public assembly. And at that time, they did do an upgrade of the framing system for public assembly, but they didn't do anything to repair or address anything with the exterior walls system, which means that they probably didn't notice anything that was issued with the wall in conjunction with their upgrade at that time. That was in the 1990s.
And how about any settling, from one end to the building or the other? Is it, I mean, are we, is it showing signs of settling?
We didn't notice any signs of settling in Sydney. But pure beam system, which is what we had here, there's always going to be, you know, sewn or what we call a different gemini. We didn't see anything that caused us a lot of any issues.
In regards to the stone veneer on the second level within your report, about how you were unsure about how it was tied to the structure.
Yes, sir.
The internal structure. And I assume that's because you can't see it, you have no idea.
It's all part of the building.
So in the process of removing the east wall, where the new addition was, was it noted? Did we note, was that part of the structure tied? Or was that veneer tied to the structure?
Well, actually.
Because I can tell you my business in structure.
Yes.
Down in the, in the west lane, west lane down in the kitchen, there wasn't anything tied to the structure. It's, I mean, literally, I probably had something wrapped in a big wall.
You're talking about the stone veneer, is that?
Yeah, the stone veneer.
Yeah, I, we think that, we don't think that necessarily tied, if anything, is tied at the foundation level of footing, and probably at the second floor.
Is that something that we're going to need to address during this construction process on the second level? If it's not, if the stone veneer is not tied to the structure and we're securing the structure, the wood framing, is that, you know, if we start manipulating and moving this building, if we start popping things up, something that happened to the stone veneer? Is that something that we need to look at?
Well, that's, that's a good question. And I think in that regard, the stone veneer itself is pretty robust, as I said. And so I would say that it's acting more like, almost like a CMU wall, if you will.
I'm thinking about turtle moving inside a shell, kind of thing. I mean, that's what it sounds like you got, you got a, you got a turtle body inside a shell. It's not really attached. But it's sort of.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking that it wouldn't be a bad idea also to check and see, once we get into, if we were doing the repair, to check and see how it's tied in at the roof level and at the second level.
So we probably need to do a little more investigation.
Might, yeah, we might need to do that.
Fair.
Yeah. That would require some finishing removal, which at that time, we weren't wanting to do that.
And that was my hesitation, that we probably need to cut back a little.
Yeah, we could move it something.
So we'll have to figure it out.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Page two. You talked about the, I'll just write it down. Code, structural review of these framing upgrades confirmed the 100 PSF light load capacity to meet code.
I'm sorry, ma'am, will you repeat? I haven't told what your name is.
Yeah, it's really busy. Okay. We got it. You hear me now? Page two.
Uh huh.
And your comment is, the structural review of these framing upgrades confirmed the 100 PSF light load capacity to meet code. Which code is that? Today's code or?
That's the current code.
I'm sorry?
The current code. That, that 100 PSF light load's been basically public assembly requirement for the current code, the previous code.
If the city.
That's been, that's been in effect the whole time.
If the city decided to go with the minimal influence that I suggested here, what kind of capacity would be expected to be able to be on the second floor and the first floor?
For the floor system?
Yes.
That doesn't change. It's already meets code. The floor system framing does meet the public, public assembly, so we're good there.
So you can have larger gatherings on the second floor?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that that was only a concern.
Right, right. That was a question.
And the two-by-four at the second level does not concern you?
Ma'am?
Two-by-four, lack of the two-by-four wall at the second level does not concern you?
I'm sorry.
Lack of the two-by-four wall on the second story? Does that have any concerns?
No, not really seeing anything that causes us concern at all. As far as, as far as the stone walls. Again, we, that, this was an interesting case because the stone wall is, is technically would be considered a veneer versus a curtain wall, but because of how robust it is, it's acting pretty much like a curtain wall. And so curtain walls are meant to stand from diaphragm to diaphragm. And it's basically improved diaphragm, the floor diaphragm, I think it's a technical, and you'll be able to stand between that. And that's basically what we saw just happening, is this, because it is a very stout wall, and not really a bad an eye. And so, that's what was, that's what we saw. If it was just regular brick veneer, like a four inch brick veneer with line mortar, it would be a totally different story. So.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did invite Mike Olson with Bureau Veritas to join us tonight. He has reviewed both the original plan set for the host's house and the recommendation from LOZ. If you guys have any additional questions for the, for the company that has been acting for building official at this time.
So, Mayor Roberts, my name's Mike Olson. I'm the Regional Director of Operations for Bureau Veritas, which currently conducts all your plan review and inspection services from the city of Lake Passus. I have looked at these plans. Some of the questions that I have is, I see where they're talking about putting the plywood on the inside. But what about the comp check? How are we going to be energy compliant within that building that's required by state law? One thing I did see in there where he brought up, the engineer, they brought up the existing building code. I don't see where that's been adopted. I, I just don't want to bring stuff up in a set of agreements and plans and that if the city hasn't adopted that code.
So, what you're saying is we need to adopt a code?
Well, there's, there's 15 different codes out there. There's 15 different code books in a code cycle. The existing building code deals with stuff like this, or your historic buildings downtown. The city's never adopted that. So, trying to reference that in your, in what you're looking at, it's hard to bring that stuff up because in my professional opinion of doing this for almost 30 years, that's a level three alteration. And trying to figure out what you can use and what you can do and can't do, the biggest issue is you can do everything that you're doing, but you're wasting your money on, and I hate to say it this way, but you've got air conditioning cooled, you got air conditioning heated, correct? Well, you got holes in brick, you got holes around windows, you've got holes around all that. How are you going to fix that? Are we just going to let electricity and energy and everything go right out the brick? Well, the thing that I was told by people on site was if we put insulation in there, well then now we're going to create mold, now we're going to create this one. What are you doing when you put a piece of OSB up? Now you're putting something for water accumulation on it. So, when that rocks, what happens? So, that's just stuff that I looked at in this building, when I looked at it. I see what they're wanting to do, I've seen it done before on older buildings. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're comparing apples to apples and we're using the right stuff and we're trying to review this kind of stuff. In my opinion.
You guys have any, any feedback on that in instructions?
I can. So, that is an issue whenever we are going through the building code. We do have the international building code the city has adopted. But typically in your historic buildings like this one, in any historic facility that you have in your county, having an existing building code adopted is highly important. And so, whenever there is not a code adopted by a jurisdiction, we typically go with the one that's adjacent. So, if you're going by 2021 international building code, so we would just kind of take that across the board and apply the building codes to that if they're not. And in these rural areas, that happens very often, that's something that we come across.
So, would you recommend the host that we need to adopt?
I would recommend, yes, I would recommend going through your codes and reading your codes up to date, looking not just at the current building code, but existing building code and your plumbing code, fire code, all of that. Just take a look at what you guys currently have adopted and look at what the gaps are and go ahead and adopt those additional codes.
Is that something that we can get on the books and score up?
That would make it easier for folks like us working with you guys as well in the future. But just so we're all on the same page on what the exit.
Oh, and that's what happens in our downtown area in Lake Passus.
Yes.
So, for this particular project, we continue with the 2020.
So, in this, with the inhistoric, I think there are some things that you can do to kind of help bridge the gap there, like you was discussing, and that's something we can even work together to see if there are any other low cost items that can kind of help bring you up on that. For example, your exterior windows, those are historic and they are special, you know? But if you ever wanted to replace those to bring yourself up to code, you could do that. But one of the major, even just adding some caulk would help with some of those air infiltration issues. But like you mentioned, there's no sheeting on this building. So, whenever we were, we were, we, we thought there was sheeting, you know, from the existing documents that we had. So, whenever we finally got into the building and we opened it up, there's no sheeting. So, you have that dew point, excuse me, is hitting inside your wall like he's alluding to. And so, if we just sort of put back regular jiffy wall, that's a potential for mold coming in the future and things like that. Well, you did have this building functioning already as it is. And whenever we removed the existing jiff, there was no mold, there were no issues, not saying that it won't happen in the future. But one of the things that we had approached the previous city manager with is at least let's put in a moisture resistant jiffy ward, so that will at least help with that. But we did say that it's not going to be a promise that it will not incur mold or, you know, building built up in the future. But that's kind of that area with these older buildings where we do our best and try to bridge that gap between what we have to work with and, you know, it's, it's cost too, you know, it's a very costly expense as well. Do you have any other suggestions to that?
I agree. I mean, we need to update the codes, but we need to make sure that everything's on the same level. Because even when we go to review it, when you're trying to take this code and this code and this code you don't even have, and you're trying to apply those different levels. Because like I said, in an existing building, there's different levels of operation. And once you get to a certain level, then you've got to go to this section of the code or this section of the code, and it takes you all over. When you don't have that code adopted, where do you go? You try to go back to the IBC, but the IBC is for new construction.
An IBC your building would not.
Yes, it would be an IBC code added.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, in the, in the process of the construction phase that we're in right now, if we adopt a historical, a quality of historical building code, is that going to delay the process of construction or can we do a final IBC play, how does that work?
It shouldn't delay the process because that project was already started on the other codes. It's from today forward that anything comes up.
And we did do our, our, I mean, we tried to do our best, you know, and, and do our code review and everything and put our best effort into that. But then when it goes to you guys for a review, again, comments from you back, but also it's, it's, your jurisdiction has the ultimate decision on what takes place here as well.
I, I actually want to speak to this gentleman's point about the, I wasn't aware that the existing building code wasn't adopted, it is one that addresses historical construction. When I did research in conjunction with the study, realized that, that the previous renovation in 1995, they were basically, that should have been a trigger to evaluate under that code in conjunction with the current code. Because that was a major renovation to the original building. Whereas the difference in my project was primarily a, a review of what was there in the way of public, public assembly levels, which we confirmed basically that it was. We had, did have some minor internal framing, they were very high. But our main scope was the exterior of the addition, or the addition to the building. So, at that time, I think you mentioned the different levels of construction. When you have the existing building code, they do have, you're going to do extensive renovations to an original sort of building. And then all that's triggered where if you go beyond a certain measure, then you're supposed to do an upgrade for the current code. So, at that point in time, they should have done that. And so, not, I'm not trying to cast aspersions, but I'm just saying, that would have been the process for the main total evaluation of upgrading to the, to the current code in effect at that time, which would have been the IBC for the 1990, whatever was adopted at that time. And they made it done because again, in constructional year, they did upgrade the framing systems there to meet the 100 pound LIGLO for public assembly. They did not do anything with the lateral system. So, according, the way it's stated, the way I understand it when I researched it, whatever, whatever, you, you do a significant renovation to an existing sort of structure, you need to basically go through on a certain level, you should basically subject to the current code place. If, if it's just basically, and that would include also a repair of the existing building, if it's damaged for any reason, rot, storm damage, whatever, you're supposed to be subjected to the current code. In that case, that really wasn't the case there. So, that could have been why existing wall systems were not upgraded with the source construction. That may have been the process, some mistake in it, but at that time, that's something that should have been triggered, a total evaluation because it was a major renovation of the building. That was, I think, maybe a level two, three. Just for clarification, to help understand what he was right now as far as those points.
Just so I understand, again, one more time, if a document is a sort of a building code, it will not slow down the process of the construction?
No, that, that's just pretty much formality to, I wasn't aware that it wasn't adopted. So, that's the, went into it, the evaluation of a historic building, that's basically the process that you want to include in the evaluation.
I have a question. On the tie rod system, will that affect the, if that is used, basically that pulls up, is that correct?
She's asking if it pulls up the roof, but it's more the wall, just holding the wall.
Yeah, it's, it's just stabilizing them in place, they're stable currently. This is basically just a built-in suspenders type of fix.
Does that affect other things like windows and doors that are existing?
No, no, we would, we would, we would basically try not to move any, any of the odds issue with the, down there. It's just basically stabilization, prevent further visiting of the system.
Well, I was wondering, you had mentioned the way it's built currently, pardon me, I heard, I mean.
My turn.
Oh, yes.
We're reaching the dew point in our walls right now. How, how do we know that, is there evidence of?
There's not any, there's not any current evidence of any. If we would have seen that, if we would have taken it off, we would have had stop construction and done what's called a mold remediation.
Well, in your opinion, what is, what is, what is preventing mold currently?
I think that your building isn't, isn't sealed tight. And if we were to come to current energy code, that would be my concern. Because once your building gets very tight, that's when you can start seeing things happen in your wall. If they're not, you know, if they, obviously this wasn't built during this time. So, my concern would be if we did try to make it a tight building, we would, we would then be incurring future issues. Right now, by allowing it to breathe, we're actually probably going to be preventing that exact issue from happening. So, I would say if it's kind of like the, it's saying, it's not broken, don't mess with it, you know? And at this point, I wouldn't try to throw a bunch of different solutions in that situation. I would just allow it to breathe. Yes, you can add some caulk and do some of those things. We've got a better air conditioning system that's in there now, and you may have some of those losses with some of that air going in and out, but that, that's a better solution. Let it breathe rather than tighten it up so much. So, that would be my recommendation, let it breathe.
Thank you, that's what I was getting at. It kind of reminds me of a project I did at North where, you know, the roof system had a layer that could breathe to prevent ice and, and winter.
So, yeah, we can add some caulk around the windows and look for some of those obvious holes, which, you know, bugs and stuff come in too. But, and adding the, the moisture resistant board, which we did add a little extra money into that once it was discovered. I think that's a good measure for now. And then maybe check it if you take a little cutout of an area that's more exposed like that end wall, you know, that's facing the parking lot that doesn't have the porch protection, that would be more exposed to water infiltration through the stone. Because, you know, stone can absorb water and then release it. I would just check it every now and then, make sure you're not seeing any new development on the wall. Just let it breathe.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Page three, nine.
We will go to discussion regarding 2026 budget rollout.
Mayor and Council, I just kind of wanted to touch base on the 2026 budget process. We've got a document in front of you on the House that includes some new items that we've added to CIB and budget this year. On top, we should have the, we should have what is the revamped CIB that will be introduced to council this summer. It's got a breakdown by division and capital improvement plan sheets behind it, which kind of shows you more of a picture of the plan that they have in mind, where the funding is going to come from, which this year, if there's associated grant funding with it, that'll be identified under funding sources along with a project description, justification, and sort of a statement of what happens if that project doesn't occur or the replacement doesn't occur if there is any. And that is going to help us prioritize capital improvement projects with the city of Lake Passus. And another sheet that we're introducing, I believe that we've had it in the past, but there's a divisional description page, just an example of this for city manager. It lists which fund is funding that particular division. So, general, water, aviation, electric, et cetera. It outlines the responsibility for that division as, as well as that division sold for the upcoming this year. And I think, to me, what's, what's the most important part of this document is it has a whole link history of the positions that were budgeted. So, we can have a year-over-year understanding of growth within the city, how's within the city reassignments, really understanding what positions have been budgeted for. Sometimes that's a question, what do I have, do I have any balls to fill this year? So, I will have a book for reference moving forward. Also, we see a supplemental position request form that each department will be filling out for any new positional requests, if they're needing new employees, any specific new equipment. That helps the council and the public as well understand why these departments are asking for certain items that will be included in your budget. And the next new sheet that we introduce this year is traveler training. Just kind of show council where we're spending our training budget. But in addition to that is an increase, decrease, expectation sheet. So, along with their base budget requests for FY '26, if there is an increase in, I used cheap companies earlier today, staying at mission costs are loading up. We want to communicate to council that that's why we're asking for more money in that line item, both fuel, it could be the store for trains, things like that. So, it really helps, I think, with the transparency of the council and the general public on understanding why we're asking for the funds that we're asking for in each division. What we're hoping to maybe discuss tonight are some meeting dates in July for budget workshops with council. My understanding that previously, it's been a hard two hour limit. Perhaps some of the Mondays, they don't have council meetings. It's a little different than what I'm used to. If that's, if the council is happy with, we can certainly do that. And we've found that, uh, ten to four session on a certain weekday might work. I know some of us work downtown and might have schedules on the legs, but if there's maybe Fridays and we can do a ten to four and work through the budget, it makes your eyes sleep a little bit, but if we can push through the, the budget sessions, we're open for anything else. Just think about it and maybe in our next meeting tonight, we can, we can nail down some dates in July, but we'd be available for those budget workshops. Like you didn't have anything else to add?
I think it's kind of like all the law that's been dropped in July. It's cool. Because we go back, because now we'll get our comeback work workshops on.
Okay. If it, if evening meetings work better that time, again, it's, it's entirely up to council availability. So we'll let you know if you have any for me.
Discussion regarding any item on the record agenda. And there is none. So at this time, we will, for a motion to adjourn our work talk session.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would make the recommendation that we take about a seven or eight minute break. If that's okay? Thank you. Thank you. All rise. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we're honestly grateful to be here in this great community back. We thank you for all of these fine folks. We thank you for elected officials. We thank you for our city employees. We just ask that you be with us, help us to have some good information, some good ideas, and to make some good decisions for the government and retired community. We ask that you watch over some safety. That you be with us until we can meet again, and always in your glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To God, the United States of America. In the republic of which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every gene justice for all. Armored veterans apply, and all the divisions be heeded. I want to say, under God, one indivisible.
We have, uh, several presentations and proclamations this evening. And, uh, first one up is tourism designation recognition. And I think Ms. Unger.
Hello again, council. Thank you for having us. Uh, these ladies, uh, that you see in fact we today have come from the Capitol, from Austin, Texas, and we are very honored to have them with us today. I'm going to let them, uh, explain a little bit about the process and what we've been going through over the past year. Uh, just a little bit of background information, and then also all of the wonderful resources that are going to be afforded to us now, um, by having this designation and with the support of the city. And so Madeline Phillips, uh, will be coming up, and then Spencer Zamora will be coming up. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, council. I'll say a few quick words, um, as Melissa mentioned about the certification itself. This is, uh, a new certification done at the state level. Uh, last year was our inaugural year, um, and actually Land Passas is one of only forty communities to be certified in the very first year. So you guys are cutting edge, um, very much so, and Melissa took, uh, great advantage of the program itself. Um, certification is, the designation is, um, a designation that is to encourage communities to recognize and support tourism as a main economic driver of their community.
Um, and also to, uh, realize and align with state resources. We've got a lot of free resources, heavily discounted resources to support communities, um, as they broaden their tourism initiatives within their community. I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to highlight some of the findings from the certification itself. Like I mentioned, this all happened last year, so my numbers are from 2023. Um, but we do have those updated numbers as far as economic, um, impacts within your community, um, available for free on our resources page. I'd like to thank you first for allowing us to be here. Melissa did an excellent job, along with Tasha, uh, showing us around the community and get to see some of your tourism inventory and assets. Uh, my name is Madeline Phillips. I work at the Office of the Governor, Economic Development and Tourism, Travel Texas, which is a bit of a mouthful. Um, we go by Travel Texas for short. We are the main tourism body for the state of Texas, and we promote Texas outside, um, to incoming visitors. It's a privilege to join you this evening, uh, and again, to recognize Land Passas as one of the first forty communities in the entire state to receive the Tourism Friendly Texas Community Certification. Uh, this statewide designation awarded through the governor, the Office of the Governor recognizes communities that demonstrate a strong commitment to tourism as a driver of local economic development. Certified communities complete a rigorous process to evaluate their visitor infrastructure, community partnerships, uh, marketing assets and brand positioning, and overall tourism potential, ultimately ensuring they are equipped to attract, welcome, and benefit from increased tourism activity. Land Passas' achievement in earning the certification reflects not just tourism success, it reflects a strategic, long-term vision for community development built around place, pride, and economic opportunity. Tourism is more than a welcome sign or a weekend event. It's a cornerstone of economic development. In 2023 alone, Land Passas welcomed visitors who contributed to nearly thirteen point eight million dollars in direct travel spending. This spending generated over four hundred thousand dollars in local taxes, dollars that go directly into your schools, roads, and city services. Events like the Riada Round, Round Rodeo and Barbecue and the Hunter's Welcome are just a couple of vibrant examples of how Land Passas celebrates its culture, draws in its visitors, and strengthens its economy. These events not only foster community pride, but also generate valuable spending that supports local businesses and helps fund public services. This certification is not just a recognition of your strong tourism performance, it's a reflection of your strategic approach to community development. From revitalizing downtown and connecting historical sites through a network of trails to an out, enhancing outdoor recreation, refurbishing Hancock Springs, and pursuing sports tourism initiatives and opportunities, it's clear that Land Passas is embracing tourism not only as an economic driver, but a way to preserve your heritage and shape your future. What stands out the most, um, today through our, our amazing visitation of your town, um, is that the genuine passion that lives here in this community for this community. From the many nonprofits working together, uh, on recent beautification efforts and public art installations, have added color and pride to your public spaces. A lot of the success in getting here is thanks to the relationship building, uh, led by Melissa and Tasha. Their ability to bring, uh, together people across organizations, businesses, and city leadership is what makes the Tourism Friendly Certification that much more meaningful for your community. It's not just a label, it's a reflection of community values in action. As one of the first forty communities in Texas to earn this distinction, Land Passas is setting an example for how rural destinations can build sustainable, visitor-friendly economies that benefit everyone. Congratulations again to Melissa, Tasha, and the chamber team, and the city of Land Passas. Your hard work and vision in helping to position Land Passas as a shining example of what's possible when a community truly embraces the power of tourism. Thank you so much. And I would love to open it up to any questions, and I believe also we're going to hear the mayor, uh, read the tourism proclamation, which is one of the steps for completing the certification and shows your commitment to tourism within your community.
And I've got a big question for you.
Yes, sir.
Did I, did I hear you say that we were the first?
Not the first, one of the forty first. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, you're, you guys, uh, I can't quite remember. We have the exact numbers, but after the first couple, we noticed that people in Texas are a little competitive. So we just say, it's a process, absolutely. Yeah, it was like a year-long process, and we had a couple of different steps. We had, uh, two interviews with Melissa and her team, talking about, um, community profile, what kind of assets, what your brand positioning is. There was a self-assessment questionnaire, which is intended to help with strategic planning, um, as well as lining some of the, the goals within leadership, city leadership, as well as stakeholders within your community. Um, I mean, you guys were talking about Hancock, uh, Hancock or Hostess House today, um, which, you know, is a huge tourism asset for your community. So it's great to see that you guys are, um, really embracing it within your community.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I just see on here that they provide resources. How do we access those resources?
Absolutely. So we have a lot of free resources available at the state. Um, one of the best ones is, um, Spencer Zamora, my colleague. She runs, um, she's the research specialist at Travel Texas. They provide a lot of highly detailed visitor spending and information to sort of see where you guys stand in terms of what's coming into your community through visitor spending. Um, there's even a metric on there I love to show, um, it's, uh, amount of taxes saved per household with the visitors coming into your community. So it helps, again, reiterate that message of, you know, why tourism is important to the community. So those are free res, free resources available on our Travel Texas website. Um, and then we've also got a couple of different programs, um, through the state. The one that I run is called the Cooperative Advertising Program, which offers heavily discounted, um, advertising opportunities for any tourism, hospitality, um, destination related businesses within the state. So zero dollar minimums, five hundred dollar minimums, um, a lot of great, um, digital assets that you can put out there and start advertising. Uh, we also do international marketing and domestic marketing. So we, um, have things like our Texas State Travel Guide, all things that Melissa has already, you know, stayed on top of, um, our Texas Events and Highways Magazine, making sure that your, you know, communities has a profile of that as well. So those are all the different types of resources that we have available. Travel Texas works with a lot of different agencies, TechDOT. Um, we work with Texas Parks and Wildlife. And again, this program is to help you connect to those other resources and those other agencies. Uh, Texas Historical Commission, that was been brought up today quite a bit. Um, they've got a lot of grant programs available for different building projects, designations. I know I've seen a lot of historical markers around town. Um, so again, just a way to tie in all of those different initiatives and just show people, um, what these organizations are and what they can provide your community.
That's awesome. Okay.
Perfect. If you would move forward with the proclamation, then we would love to take a photo after, if that's something that's available at this time.
Do you want to read the proclamation? I think it'd be fitting for you to do it.
Um, sure. I'll be happy to do it. Um, I just don't have a copy. Sorry.
Here.
Oh, perfect.
She's the one responsible for all of this.
With Tasha by my side, thank you. Um, Tourism Friendly Proclamation. Whereas the City of Land Passas has long been renowned for its rich history, vibrant culture, and unique attractions that draw visitors to our community. And whereas the Land Passas County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center has been instrumental in promoting and supporting tourism, offering invaluable information, resources, and services to enhance the experience of visitors to our city. And whereas it is with great pride and excitement that we announce Land Passas has been designated as tourism friendly by the state of Texas, recognizing our city's outstanding qualities and contributions to tourism. And whereas this esteemed designation reflects our commitment to providing exceptional experiences, preserving our heritage, and fostering a welcoming environment for all who come to explore our city. Whereas this proclamation serves as a testament to the collaborative efforts of our city officials, community members, and the dedicated team at the Land Passas County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, whose collective efforts have contributed to the significant achievement, achievement. Now therefore, I, Mayor Herb Pierce, or Melissa Unger, uh, Mayor of the City of Land Passas, Herb Pierce, in recognition of this distinguished honor and in celebration of our collective success, do hereby proclaim Land Passas, Texas as a friendly, tourism-friendly city. I encourage all residents and visitors to join in celebrating this remarkable milestone and to continue supporting our vibrant community and thriving tourism sector. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Land Passas to be affixed this day, back on, or I'm sorry, May, twelfth day of May, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more thing while we, uh, broke for a break. Um, you all have the new tourism brochure. There hasn't been one done since two thousand sixteen, so we thought it was very timely and exciting to roll that out tonight. Um, that is inside your, uh, visitors guide, your current visitors guide, that we do in co-partnership with the dispatch, and then along with some Travel Texas little gifts as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next one up, proclamation is International Firefighters Day, May fourth. And Ms. Dorothy Pearson will read that. I'm going to break you in right.
Break me in. Whereas we recognize and honor the selfless and heroic service provided by the men and women of the Land Passas Fire Department. And whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property, and sometimes that dedication is in the form of countless hours volunteered over many years. Others, it is many selfless years working in the industry. In all cases, it risks the ultimate service Africa, sacrifice of firefighter's life. And whereas the International Firefighters Day is a time where the community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure their communities and their environments are safe as possible. It is also a day in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contribution. Whereas the International Firefighters Day is observed each year on the fourth of May on where we remember the past firefighters who have dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of us all and show our support and appreciation to firefighters worldwide who continue to protect us so well throughout the year. And whereas hailing from all walks of life, they are mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. They protect us without wanting of recognition or reward. It is our time of, in our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are the essence of true meaning of community. Therefore, now be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Land Passas, May fourth, twenty twenty-five is International Firefighters Day.
We'll just stand up.
We'll just stand up from here. Where to go, Joe? Good job, Joe. National Police Week, May eleventh through May seventeenth. Councilmember Hernandez.
Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls. as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Lampaces Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Lampaces. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, the Lampaces Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Herb Pierce call upon all citizens to observe the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week by commemorating and thanking our police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further wish to extend appreciation to Chief Jody Cummins and the Lampaces Police Department for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community. In witness whereof, Mayor Herb Pierce sets his hand this 12th day of May, 2025.
Good job. Good job, chief. Next presentation and proclamation is National Public Works Week, May 18th through May 24th, 2025.
With the motto, "People Purpose Presence." Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Lampaces, Texas. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid wastewater systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Lampaces to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it now resolved that the illustrious Herb Pierce, mayor, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. He urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they are to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. He signed this, the 12th day of May, 2025.
You guys will come down. National EMS Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025.
To designate the week of May 18th, 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Service Week. Service is weak, sorry about that. Whereas, emergency medical service is vital to the public service. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-the-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skill. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, Herb Pierce, mayor, city of Lampaces, Texas, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week, May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, We Care for Everyone. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of the EMS profession and the essential services that it provides.
I think we have Cole Camacho. All right. Wow, we've got so many servants. We've got so much to be thankful for. Thank you, guys on every team level for all that you do in keeping our communities and people safe. That's one of the most important things that we do in our community. Again, thank you. We'll go to public citizens' comment. Citizens' comment. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented up underneath this agenda item. And there is none. We'll go to 1.2. Citizens' comment. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. And there is none. Public hearing to receive citizens' comment regarding a request to rezon property described as Lot 1 through 6, Lock 5, white addition from commercial to single residential family 6, SF 6, commonly known as East Avenue I.
Mayor and council, Mr. Rocha is the property owner. He's asking for consideration of approval to reason property from commercial, single family. The area is characterized as suburban mixed use, as defined in the comprehensive plan. The property is surrounded by single-family homes and commercial property. All notifications and publications required have been made. Staff note 18 notices to property owners within 200 feet. We received none in favor. We did receive one in opposition. It is in your council packet. The request was heard by the planning commission on May 1st with approval of 5 to 0. If you have any questions or concern, Mr. Rocha is here this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions? And there is none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding a request to modify the city of Lampaces Code of Ordinance, Chapter 82, Utilities, Article 3, Sanitary Sewer System, Division 4, Building Sewers, Adding Section 82 through 216 Sewer System Maintenance.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just want to take a look at addition of this sewer ordinance. We've come to realize that the distinguish, being able to distinguish between property owner or utility customer versus city responsibility when it comes to the sewer line. So we looked at a couple of other cities and came up with what we thought would be potentially the best fit and fair to the customer as well as the city. Several cities still require the customer of a single-service sewer line to be responsible that all the way from the house or building all the way out to the city main, which that creates the customer to be responsible for replacement and the potential of encountering other utilities and damaging. So what we're proposing is creating an ordinance where users, kind of the same as you do for a water utility meter. You know, we're licensed by the state of Texas, so we're not licensed plumbers, so we only service up to a point of the water meter. Customer responsibility is from the backside of the meter to the residence. So, could you roll up to the next section with the summary on there?
So, as far as sewer system maintenance, what we're proposing is for properties with gravity wastewater service, the real property owner should be responsible for the operation, maintenance, or repairs of the system located on such real property from the structure served by the sewer system to the commencement of the public street or public right-of-way that is contiguous to the real property. Next section would be properties with low-pressure service. The property owner would be responsible for proper operation, maintenance, and repairs of the sewer system and the service lateral lift station and forced main between the building and to the point of connection to the sewer line. With that being a forced main, that's permitted on-site sewage facility, so customer would maintain responsibility for that. If there's any issues that we find in the system while we're out doing camera work or sewer line investigations that could potentially create infiltration and inflow through the customer service line into the collection system, which ultimately makes its way and affects treatment, we would like to make note that to give the customer a year to get that issue resolved. And that is something that I researched from other cities. It's a neighboring city that actually does Edwards Aquifer recharge zone testing that is required by the state, since they're over the Edwards. And that is stipulation TCQ has in place is, once you find a problem in the collection system, based on your sewer line inspections, that you have one year to make corrections for that problem. So, and with that, like I said, trying to provide some clarity between customer and city responsibility. And then also in addition of a section that if repairs were not complete with one year of notification by the city, that we may engage in services of contractors to make the repairs, with costs for such repairs to be paid by the city and subsequently charged to the property owner and utility customer for reimbursement.
Any questions?
Just curious, what's in place right now?
Nothing that is not very gray. I couldn't find anything that provided any clarity on that, specifying either way. And one of the reasons we came across this is we had a field issue where we had gone out and we actually had staff that kind of had a couple of different understandings. So that kind of brought us to the point of needing to look in this. So, nothing that was real clear that specifies the point between the two.
When there's an issue between the house and the sewer tap, historically has the city repaired that?
I think, from my understanding, is typically have taken over from the property line out, and customer has been responsible for private line back to the house. So, like I said, there's nothing that clearly states that in a current ordinance that we found.
Because I know that when we had sewer issues, because we had, you know, tree roots and stuff like that, we had to, we had to pay for everything all the way up to, right to where we tapped into the line, and we had to do like, we had to add like two different washouts.
So it's typically standard practice, but it's nice to adopt clearly ordinances that we can refer to when we have any issues that come out in the field. We can go specifically to this section of the ordinance and refer to that. So it doesn't seem like we're just pulling things out of...
That makes sense. I mean, but I never even considered the fact that the city would have to pay for that. It was coming out of our house.
Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion and possible action concerning the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on April 28, 2025.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, discussion, and possible action regarding the purchase and charges in excess of $4,000 from April 1, 2025 to April 30, 2025. Discussion, possible action regarding the March 2025 investment report.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
City manager's operational report.
So at the Hostess House, we have a regularly scheduled meeting every other week. So last Wednesday, in discussion, they did indicate if the stop-work order is lifted this evening, they would anticipate completing their work on the building at the end of June. There is some additional work that needs to be done on the facility. We need to complete the FDC stubout. We will need to do some work to the parking lot to make it ADA compliant. At first, we were thinking it was going to have to be an overhaul of the entire lot, but I think there's some ways to get around having to do the entire lot at this time. And we'll also need to acquire new tables and chairs. But they do anticipate being done with the work that they have scheduled by the end of June. I don't really think we need to get into the parking lot until they're off-site, just for some logistical reasons. But we do have a few little things that we'll need to clean up after reliance and ASD are offsite for that project. Out at the airport, the fuel... and ASD are offsite for that project. Out at the airport, the fuel tank has been installed and we have fuel on site. We are not selling yet. There's some calibration that needs to be done and a final inspection, but then we'll be able to sell fuel to our pilots. Once we're selling fuel, I'm expecting that we'll see our flight operations uptick, which is really going to be important for us in the future as we pursue grant opportunities for the airport and we can indicate how much use we're getting out at that facility. The Courtyard Square Association is getting ready to kick off their summer events with a movie night on May 30th and a weekend concert series throughout June. I think the majority of those are Saturdays with the, oh, the majority of them are Fridays with the exception of one Saturday. I knew I was going to get that wrong. We kind of went through a budget recap earlier. We're in full swing internally. Each department's working on their budget requests and capital improvement programs. Just a note that any organizations that typically receive any funding from the city, we have tried to contact all of those that we have on file, and we would like to get their requests by May 31st, and then we will have our budget work sessions in July. And I just want to point out that during the recent rains, we did notice some water issues inside both the Calvert Building and City Hall. Becky's been working with TML to see if we can file an insurance claim for those things. At our next meeting, we will also have consideration to install many splits in the AV room right over here, just in case we have any future issues with AC unit in this building. Our AV equipment became dangerously close to failure. Christie can speak to that a little bit. So it would just be nice to have a small backup system in case there's AC failures in this building in the future. As we know, there's very limited warranty on the repairs that are being done. So we just want to make sure that equipment's protected in there. We'll have that for you at our next council meeting. Do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions? Just had a few mayoral comments tonight. I just wanted to thank Dorothy Pearson and Edward Gold for you guys' service to step up to the plate and run for city council. We always need good people here. And I mean, I tell you, it just amazed me what a great town we live in, and it's all of our, I think, our thought process and goals is to make Lampasas as good as it possibly can be. And I want to sincerely thank you guys for being here and stepping up. You guys, we always need good board members, too. B and Z, I mean, there's all kinds of boards we need to get on. Eddie Bowden needs to get on a couple of boards. And anyway, I want to thank all of you guys for everything you do for our community. And with that, we'll go to new business 7.1, discuss and consider the selection winner of the website photo contest.
A second.
Can I get a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wow. I didn't know that. How about that? That's cool. Discussion, possible actions to select a member of council to sit on the capital improvement program committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Keel was appointed to the CIP Board to fill a vacancy in the remaining term in March of 2024. Since he has taken a job outside of the city limits, it's a little difficult for him to make it here on Thursdays at noon. And we do have a few that actually go for a few weeks where we have a noon meeting on Thursdays. So at this time, we're just looking for a volunteer or somebody to nominate somebody to take over for Mr. Keel.
Dorothy Pearson?
I nominate Ms. Dorothy Pearson.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion and acceptance of the Lampasas County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center by annual report.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during workshop, and at this time, we're asking to consider a motion to accept the Lampasas County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center by annual report and do authorize reimbursement in the amount of $30,310.30. Again, if you have any questions, Ms. Unger is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
I move to accept the Lampasas County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor by annual report for quarters 1 and 2 and authorize reimbursement in the amount of $30,310.30.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to thank you all for inviting or for welcoming our Travel Texas folks. And just to note that National Tourism Week was February 4 through the 10th. So again, it's all relevant. And to your point, Council Keel, yeah, Council Keel, we are already currently utilizing some of those resources that Madeline did mention, and we intend to go full stream with all the ones that she's going to introduce to us and just to maximize our reach and offerings. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And discuss and consider resolution of the city council to support the Spring Ho Festival to be held July 7 through the 13, 2025.
As you can see, we have lots of green shirts in the audience this evening, so this is our time to support them by resolution. With Mr. Bobo, Mrs. Snead, and myself, we have completed the resolution on here. So whereas an annual Spring Ho Festival is held in the city of Lampasas each year, July 7 through 13 has been designated as the Spring Ho Festival dates for 2025 by the Spring Ho Committee. And whereas the city council, the city of Lampasas, has determined that activities in connection with Spring Ho serve a public interest and that certain public facilities be made available for use during Spring Ho. And whereas the Spring Ho Committee is authorized to use certain public streets within the city of Lampasas for Spring Ho activities, and the Hancock Park Pavilion, Hostess House lawn area, W Brick Park, Gavin Garrett Soccer Field, and portions of River U Drive be set aside for Spring Ho activities. And whereas that special parking and use regulation of the streets, Courthouse Square, outdoor pavilions, and parklands within the W Brick Park and Hancock Park on the dates of July 7 through 13, 2025 shall be reserved for Spring Ho activities in the manner designated by the Spring Ho Committee. And whereas the committee is specifically authorized to limit vehicles, groups, clubs, and vendors from city areas utilized for Spring Ho activities as the committee may see fit to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the participants. And whereas the police department of the city of Lampasas is authorized to enforce and limit the use of such areas as formally adopted by the Spring Ho Committee in connection with the Spring Ho activities. So at this time, we're asking to proclaim the week of July 7 through the 13th as Spring Ho Week in Lampasas.
Sold.
All in favor?
One more. I needed a second. Yes?
She seconded it.
We're second, and we're approved. You're behind.
Thank you. I couldn't hear.
And we do have this right here. Are we going to take a picture?
We will in a minute. Let's do the next one.
Discussion, possible actions regarding hot funds request by the Spring Ho Committee in amount not to exceed $7,500 for the annual Spring Ho Festival, July 7 through the 13, 2025.
Mayor and council, this is the same request that we do generally every year. You may recall last year it was, went up to 7,500 from the previous years of being 5,000 to help cover additional expenses with advertising costs, brochures, and distributed posters, advertising the concerts, and utilize local radio for public relations and not paid advertising. The marketing plan detail is attached. If you have any questions, we do have several representatives here that can address any questions you may have.
I don't have a question. Let's make a motion to approve hot funds in amount not to exceed $7,500 to assist with funding for marketing and advertising in support of Spring Ho Festival during the week of July 7 through the 13, 2025.
Second. Any discussions? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we can take a picture.
We're going to do one more. We're going to do fireworks, and then we'll bring him up. One more.
I'll try and. Discussion, possible action regarding the approval of Spring Ho fireworks event coordinated by Pyrotechnico Fireworks Incorporated to be held during Spring Ho Week at Gavin Garrett Soccer Field on July 9, 2025.
Yes, sir. This is the same company that we've used for the last seven years. We will have it on July 9. It'll be approximately at 9:15 in the evening. We have vetted this through our fire marshal. We have completed the forms. They have paid their fee, and we have submitted this off to them so they can go to the state marshal and get their request for their permit as well. We will have, fire trucks will be available like they always are, and we'll have the PD available as well to direct traffic into close-off streets as needed.
I move to approve Pyrotechnico Fireworks Incorporated to conduct a firework display on July 9, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now y'all can come take a picture.
You guys come down, and we'll stand up. I kept trying to get you guys down. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, so we'll pat, we'll pat her on the back a little bit here. 7.6, discussion, possible actions to move the Monday, May 26, 2025. City council meeting to Tuesday, May 27, 2025, due to the Memorial Day holiday.
Mayor and council, just asking, consider a motion to move that Monday meeting to Tuesday and observance of Memorial Day holiday.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, possible action to consider the approval or denial or approval with modifications. A request to rezone the property described as lots 1 through 6, block 5, white sedition from commercial to single residential family 6, SF 6, commonly known as East Avenue I.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing, and at this time, I'm asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to rezone property described as lots 1 through 6, block 5, white sedition from commercial seat to single-family 6, commonly known as East Avenue I.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of an ordinance to modify the city of Lampasas Code of Ordinance, Chapter 82, Utilities, Article 3, Sanitary Sewer System, Division 4, Building Sewers, Adding Section 82-216 Sewer System Maintenance.
Mayor and council, this item was discussed during public hearing, and at this time, I'm asking to consider a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to modify the city of Lampasas Code of Ordinance, Chapter 82, Utilities, Article 3, Sanitary Sewer System, Division 4, Building Sewers, Adding Section 82-216 for Sewer System Maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
7.9, discussion, possible action regarding consideration of approval of option 1 as defined in the structural assessment provided by the LOC consultants for the hostess house.
Mayor and council, staff is simply looking for guidance from council on proceeding with the hostess house now that we've received the structural review from LOC.
Second.
Any discussion?
One quick question. I mean, they mentioned certain upgrades that we may have to, I mean, is that, how do we factor that in on this option?
So when we were speaking before the meeting, the plywood option is roughly estimated to be about, it's under $14,000 if they do the tie-ins. It's going to be a little bit more expensive. They didn't have a price for me on that tonight.
Okay.
I would ask also, when you make your motion, that you lift the stop work order if we're going to proceed with this.
So I need to amend the work, I need to amend my motion to include lifting our stop work order.
Yes, ma'am.
So I move to amend the motion.
I'll second.
Do we know what the cost is, kind of what additional cost we're looking at, by chance?
Under $14,000 with the plywood option. The tie rods will be a little bit more expensive. I did not have that, they did not have that price for me this evening.
Not even a ballpark?
Not even a ballpark.
Do you know where we're going to pay for that out of? Was it that one CO that we had?
It will need to come out of the CO issue, and it's my hope, once we get that pricing from them, that we actually come to council with a firm budget for this project, because those funds have not been formally identified in full in the past.
Okay.
Mayor, I have checked with some engineers I know and some also some building people. I do have concern about this as a Band-Aid approach. However, I have been told that it is sufficient. I don't have any timeline of how long this might be a better than whole redo. I'm just concerned that this is not a long-term approach, but I don't oppose the motion, but I just want to register some concern.
I guess one of the, one of the questions I have is, are we, with this vote here, are we issuing a blank check to the city to get the hostess house done?
I don't believe it's a blank check, no, sir.
Okay. So we're still operating in some constraints and some, that's kind of just what makes me a little bit nervous here.
That's a tricky question, as there has not been a budget formally adopted for this project.
From the very beginning.
From the very beginning, there has not been a formal allocation of funds. There have been in presentations recognition of where certain funding has come from, $800,000 from hotel occupancy tax and $800,000 from the CO issue. That's 1.6 million. The contract that was awarded was for 2.2. So there's never been any formal identification of where that excess funding is going to come from. Now, the most common sense is the CO issue. It did receive significant interest revenues during post-COVID inflation, so there is some there to make up that difference. It doesn't make up for the entire amount. So in completing this project, it will likely dip away from other projects that that CO was issued for.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, possible actions to purchase electrical service poles from Tech Line Incorporated in the amount of $18,000.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mr. Sanders and I have worked on this agenda item to gather some information for you for his poles that he needs to replace. So staff has been working. They got multiple projects going on at the time. There is one-on-one 90 going on as well as they do have some NextLink poles they need to replace. This is a budgeted item. There's currently $44,672 in this line item. We're asking to go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of electrical poles from Tech Line in the amount of $18,000.
So moved.
Second.
Have we got everything purchased for Turner Field right now? I know we got, it's budgeted, but it's.
The wire, the lights, the holes, the transformer, everything other than the conduit, and I have the package ready to go out for bids on that.
Did I hear you correct that some of these poles are to replace NextLink poles? Is that what you said? Is that what you said?
Yes, so the base 6 and 7, if they're starting on the east side of town, NextLink is engineered, their lines have been requested that we upgrade 23 poles, I believe, and we get to charge them for these upgrades. Part of these poles will be used for that, and the rest of them will be used out here on 190, just past Auction Bar where they're doing the tech slot work out there, and we have to move the line over.
Okay.
It's all coming out of our electric system maintenance for right now. I build, stack, build NextLink.
We do have a, do we have a markup on those poles that we're replacing for NextLink, or they get them at our cost?
I've always built everything at cost. Material.
But they, but they have to pay to connect ours, right? They pay. Full attachment agreements.
Yes, they do. Full attachment. Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We get a motion?
We did. Yeah, and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, possible action regarding the closure of Third Street from Live Oak to Baccon on May 30, 2025, from 7:00 P M. to 11:00 P M. for movie night on the square hosted by Pretty Little Things.
Mayor and Council, this is just another activity we're doing on the Courtyard Square, and because the location of where we're going to put the movie projector and the screen, we want to go ahead and close off portion of that. It'll be late, so it won't affect any businesses or anything, but we do want to get your permission to go ahead and do that closure, just in case we need to for safety.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Parent trap.
We'll need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the city council of the City of Lampassus, Texas, will meet and close the executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, as follows. Section 551, 074, Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties or discipline of a public officer or employee, city manager, or other personnel matters as allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And now, we'll adjourn into executive session and reconvene. Well, we all came out of executive session, didn't we?
So, all in one piece.
All right. We all came out of an executive session, all in one piece, and nothing, nothing else came out of executive session tonight. So, we'll get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.